Evening, everyone. We will call this hearing of the Economic Development Committee to order. I'm so glad that you are all joining us on this evening for the Department of Development's Minimum Qualifying Incentive Wage Threshold Policy. As a refresher, our current policy states that only jobs that pay $15 per hour or more can qualify for city tax incentives. And per city code, this policy is up for review. I want to pause and make sure that I do again give kudos to President Pro Tim Elizabeth Brown. Under her leadership and chair of this committee years ago, she codified this in policy and in that policy says that we have to review it every three years. So we are now in that review period. During the first hearing on September 20th hosted by American Floor Source, again, want to thank them for their generosity, the Department of Development presented data on the pay scales of jobs presently in the city's incentive portfolio, national marketing wage data, and provided a policy recommendation to increase the wage to an amount between $18.50 and $20 per hour. Tonight, we will hear presentations from four invited community stakeholders, which I think are well-rounded around this discussion because it's not simply about the wage, but it is about our economy, how we continue to create jobs, but also about how do we ensure that the folks that work in our community are able to live in our community, but also maintain that we continue to be competitive and attractive to grow our community. It is my hope that after tonight, members of the public and community advocates and my colleagues alike will gain new perspectives and a stronger understanding of the changes council is currently considering. I want to pause right here and one make sure I gave a good explanation. But I want to defer to Deputy Director Quentin Harris with the Department of Development. Are there any comments or if you wanted to make on the first hearing or anything that you wanted to add to that?
Thank you, Chair Bankston, Councilmember. No, there's not much I really want to add. I think from the first session, I just think we really took a deep dive at the data using our existing incentive portfolio to just give us a snapshot of what the qualifying wage rates are and quite honestly where the current wages are per sector. I thought it was very illuminating. Really, the only sector that we found to potentially be affected by an increase in wages would be the distribution logistics sector, which we talked quite a bit about during that session. I think the information provided just will give council a good lens just to understand what the increase will mean for our ability to recruit that one sector specifically. I think we still will be competitive as the market is slowly increasing its wages in order to be effective and competitive. But that's really all. I would like to recap from last session.
And thank you again, Deputy Director. I thought that it was a very robust conversation that we had at that first hearing, which is on the city's YouTube page. If folks want to go back and view it, a conversation again, not just simply about this wage piece, but really about how the city's economic development portfolio is performing. So thank you and your team again for all the work that you put in on that first hearing and this work that we are embarking on here tonight. I do want to clarify before we go into the presentations and hear from my colleagues that this is simply about the wage threshold for folks that are seeking public incentive dollars from the city of Columbus. This does not impact the minimum wage of the city. Unfortunately, we have a state house that does not believe in workers' rights as much as we do here at City Hall and have really strong-armed and pigeon and holded us that we are not able to change the minimum wage for the entire city. So unfortunately, it does not affect everyone, but it does affect those that are seeking public dollars and public incentive to come to our city or to grow in our cities. So I just want to make that clarification. And also, it does not affect current city employee employees as well or those that do contracts with the city. I think that is our conversations that colleagues around this dais are thinking about as this being a catalyst. And so we're excited about those ongoing conversations. I just want to make sure I had that point of clarification to tonight's hearing. I am excited to be joined by two of my colleagues here tonight and want to make sure that I give them an opportunity to give any opening remarks. So first, Councilmember Lourdes Barroso de Padilla.
Thank you, Chair Bankston. Excited to hear the testimony this evening. I mean, whenever we have the opportunity to pay people more, number one, to remain competitive. Well, number one, because we should pay people more. Number two, to remain competitive, I think is always an opportunity for us to really have a thoughtful conversation, intentional conversation about the best way that we can do that, the pros and the cons. Even if this is only one little slice of the pie, it is an opportunity for us to say to folks, yes, we will incentivize you, but you also need to raise the bar in what and how you're treating others and how you're pouring into the prosperity of our people and our families. And that's really what this is an effort at doing. So thank you for holding the hearings and again, excited to hear from our speakers.
Thank you, Councilmember. And Vice Chair of our Economic Development Committee, Councilmember Mayurini.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Bankston, Chair Bankston. Appreciate the opportunity to speak this evening. This is important work. We've spent a lot of time shaping, you know, what this policy means for the city of Columbus. And, you know, we did a great job getting people at $15 an hour, but it's now time to raise the bar, make sure that people in this community can receive a living wage from those people that receive incentives as we're growing. We are growing and, you know, at rates that are many times greater than other cities in the country. So we just want to be reflective. And so I appreciate the work that the department's put in to analyze this, to look at what that means, the impact of it. But we're also excited that, you know, these companies that will come in in the future and the people that receive these incentives are locking hands with us to say that this is an important metric and we want to make sure that we're supporting our community. So this is a good opportunity to learn more and we appreciate the work and look forward to the testimony this evening.
Thank you, Vice Chair Reimi. And I gave kudos to President Pro Tim Brown, but Councilmember Reimi was the Chair of Economic Development before I came on to council. So thank you for your leadership and guidance through this process. Each presentation today of our invited speakers will have roughly 10 minutes for their presentation. After each presentation, we'll have short Q and A from the council members. Staff will also be monitoring the comment section on Facebook, YouTube, and the WebEx. So if you are live with us on WebEx or if you're viewing via Facebook and YouTube and you're intrigued by something and have a question, please pop it in there and we'll do our best to get that answered for you. After all the presentations from the, after all the presentations, excuse me, members of the public will have the opportunity to provide testimony as well. Each speaker's remarks will be limited to three minutes. And so if you are looking to speak this evening, please see one of our staff members. First up, I'm really excited. My team reached out to Carly Booz and her shop because, you know, I was saying to folks, we always as practitioners and policymakers, we throw terms around and we, you know, we talk about it because we're in that space. But this idea of a living wage that we talk about all the time and her organization, the Affordable Housing Alliance of Central Ohio has done so much work around this. And so I really wanted to make sure that she was here to talk about that because I think central to my philosophy and this council's philosophy is that if you live in the city of Columbus, I mean, if you work in the city of Columbus, you should be able to afford to live in the city of Columbus. So first on our agenda, I would like to invite Carly Booz. She is the Executive Director of the Affordable Housing Alliance of Central Ohio to give a presentation. Ms. Booz, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you and good evening, Chair and members of the council. As you said, I'm Carly Booz. I'm with the Affordable Housing Alliance of Central Ohio.
Thank you. It is now. I'm privileged to join you tonight to talk about wages, economic development, and affordable housing and the intersections thereof. I think the theme that you will see running throughout is that these are not independent systems, that they are dependent variables. When we talk about affordable housing at the Alliance, we mean housing that is no more than 30% of an individual household's income. So if you have a job and you have a home and the cost of your housing goes up, you can become cost-burned and that is not good. If you have a job and a home and your wages go up, however, you can achieve affordability through either of those metrics. One of the things that we believe strongly is that there is no single solution to the challenge of affordable housing in Central Ohio. We need to look at construction. We need to look at programming. We need to look at policy and we need to look at wages, all in a fell swoop. So as I said, I am with the Affordable Housing Alliance. We do have 28 members and we lean on their experiences and their expertise to inform the strategies to solve our housing challenge. We do so through research, through education, through technical assistance, and through advocacy. But I do want to underscore that we are not a trade association. Our work really is to serve the people of Central Ohio, ensure they have the strategies that they need to solve the housing demands. When I have any sort of discussion on housing, I do like to anchor it in a clear understanding of what affordable housing means and who it is intended to serve because I do think that there are misconceptions about what the affordable housing audience looks like. What I have done is I have mapped the area median income, AMI, that's what a lot of housing professionals will speak in, to the federal poverty line, which is what a lot of our human services organizations speak in, to an annual income as well as an hourly income, and then to the jobs that tend to match to that. And I want to stress too that we do in Central Ohio, in Central Ohio have programming designed to serve the housing needs of all of these different income brackets. I think it's fair to say that none of them are sufficient. None of them are meeting all of the demand that is out there. But we do know that there is housing need even in these higher income categories. One of the points of information that we know to be true and has remained true is that 54,000 households in Franklin County pay more than half of their income towards housing. That could be rent, could be the mortgage. We also know that we should be building between 14,000 and 21,000 homes per year to keep up with the demand, just to not let that 54,000 number grow any larger. In any way you swing it, we are not hitting that track. Whether you believe we are at the low estimate or the high estimate, we are tens of thousands of units behind where we need to be at this point in our growth. As a result, we have lost over 20,000 homes that previously ran in for $900 or less in just the last four years. For comparison, that's a housing loss larger than the city of Hilliard, larger than the city of Reynoldsburg. It's significant. While we know that these housing needs touch many of our people, we also know that they are most pronounced for those who are at the lowest end of the economic ladder, those who are working minimum wage and those who are benefit-dependent. For every 100 extremely low-income families, we only have 32 homes available and affordable to them, which means that 2/3 of our need is going unmet. And conversely, of those extremely low-income households, the vast majority are severely cost-burdened. When I say severely cost-burdened, it means that they are paying more than half their income towards housing and that is considered a toxic trade-off. That means at the end of the month, those are households that have to pick between housing and medicine, housing and food, housing and helping their kids with homework versus pulling an extra shift or two at work to make the ends meet. If you compare our housing wage, the amount of money that a household must earn to afford a modest two-bedroom apartment in our community to the minimum wage, you can see that that delta has been growing over a number of years. Today is a $10 gap between the minimum wage and what a Franklin County household needs to earn to afford the rent. I will note that there is significant variation throughout our city on what that looks like. Here in the 43215 ZIP code, a household needs to earn $27 per hour to afford the median rents. I will also note that if you have a child under the age of compulsory education, you have to factor childcare costs into your household budget. These grow dramatically as well. I tend to talk a lot about rental, but we do need to note that this is a problem that affects homeowners as well. As of today, the average home sale in the Central Ohio region is now over $330,000. If you apply an average tax, average insurance, average interest rate to that without a down payment, that household is going to pay $3,100 per month to afford the mortgage. To earn that safely and sustainably, a household needs to earn $126,000 per year. You may note that that is above our median income, so the average resident can no longer afford our average home. Conversely, looking at households that earn the minimum wage, a wage worker would need to work 285 hours per week to afford the average home. That is seven full-time jobs. And if you're great at crunching the math, that is more hours than we have in a week. So a minimum wage worker would have to create three new days to be able to afford the average home. One result of which is that we are now seeing evictions in Franklin County that are surpassing any sort of historical rate we have seen in our lifetimes. That we have had 40,000 evictions since COVID-19 began as the equivalent of evicting everybody in all of Worthington, all of Bexley, and all of O'Betts. I should note, we are thankful that the Emergency Rent Assistance Program has allowed us to pull many of those families off the brink and we're grateful for the leadership of the city and the county in launching that program. This is not just a problem for households, but for employers as well. We've done a survey here of local housers who also have large staffs. So they see the HR side as well as the housing side and asked, what does it mean for you to live in a housing crisis as it relates to managing a team? 80% of those surveyed employers said that anxiety and stress caused by housing instability reduces morale and productivity at work. And over half said that they experienced increased turnover costs and retention costs due to our housing challenge. In that same survey, we found that 27% of employers feel deterred from relocating or expanding their businesses in Central Ohio as a result of our lack of affordable housing. An additional 27% said that they feel impeded in their diversity, equity, and inclusion objectives as a result of this hiring challenge. We also know from national research that housing and eviction, housing and foreclosure are closely linked and that a forced housing move increases a worker's risk of being laid off from their job by 22%. I don't want to be entirely doom and gloom. We know that housing is a challenge, but we also know the benefits of solving it are immense. So for instance, nationally, 76% of educators report that housing impacts their classroom and that they have students who are suffering from housing cost burdens and housing instability. But solving affordable housing increases student readiness for kindergarten. It increases reading rates. It expands graduation rates and it reduces the hypermobility stemming from eviction that causes students interruptions to their education. Similarly, we know that health and housing are closely linked, but addressing housing can increase residents' access to preventative care. It can increase their supports and their treatment for chronic diseases and it can reduce accidental injuries that result in increases to a household budget. And then finally, we know that housing and economic development are closely linked. Not only is that employee and morale and absenteeism affected by housing instability, but we know that by increasing access to affordable housing, and again, I want to clarify that as I'm saying that, I mean housing that is affordable. So not necessarily subsidized housing, but housing that fits within an individual's budget, that that increases their ability to save and spend those resources on healthcare, on food, and on retirement. We also know that there's a benefit to the community through affordable housing in that every 100 affordable homes built results in $7.9 million in local income taxes and creates 122 jobs. We do know that solutions exist. I would be remiss if I did not take the opportunity to thank the mayor and to thank the leadership of the city for putting a $200 million bond measure on the ballot in November. We know that that is going to help us reduce our housing costs and it's going to help solve this challenge. We also need to look at regional collaboration and how we can have cross-border solutions that work with the county and the counties among us. And we need to look at how we can leverage our one-time federal relief funds to ensure a durable housing recovery. And I also want to note that we do have a program operating now in Franklin County that is targeted at ensuring those who are in low-income positions have the housing stability they need to go through a workforce training program and unlock higher-paying jobs that are recession-proof and automation-proof. And I want to thank Home for Families and the Ohio Means Job Center for their collaboration and supporting this program. I want to thank you for your time tonight and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Carly, for that informative but also sobering, I think, presentation. And I think many of, any of us who see the economy of Columbus and as a homeowner, you see your home value going up, we feel good about that, but also it's applying pressure. And we have to make sure that we have a community that everyone can live in. Just for a point of clarification, when you showed that chart there with the AMI and the dollar amount attached to it, what was the household size for that specific slide?
There's a family of three seeking a home with two bedrooms.
Got it. Okay. And then when we talk about this idea of housing costs or being housing cost burden, I do want to clarify, is that rent or is that also rent or mortgage in many cases? But also the other ancillary things with the household cost, so utilities, all that good stuff?
Correct. That includes the housing payment, principal taxes and insurance for homeowners as well as utilities.
And I just want, and this is not a question, but more of a comment, to see that data there. And so, you know, in addition to being on council, in my day job, we work with folks who are, you know, at the, at risk of being homeless. And our good job is to prevent homelessness. And there's always one story that sticks with me, which was this young woman who got a good-paying job, but then also received an eviction letter and lost that good-paying job because she got evicted, right? And so to be able to calculate what that means for productivity, the learning lost and relationships lost that her child now has to deal with because of changing schools, what she now has to go through with that eviction now on her record is really damaging. And it's a ripple effect in our economy. So I really want to commend you for capturing that in a really quantitative way. I'll go around the dais. Councilmember Barroso de Padilla, any questions for you?
Yeah, Carly, I think this is helpful perspective for, also for first. Can you talk about what it affects on eviction? Like how long, how far do you have to get for your eviction to go through that process? That was something that, as we talk about COVID, because my other wonders also around the effects it has on homeowners.
I have this on. The effects that it has had on homeowners, which is a little bit of a longer stretch, right? If you're behind in your mortgage. But I think it would just be helpful for people to understand what that cycle looks like because especially as we're talking about the effects of the pandemic, how quickly people can slip and fall far behind. I think it's good perspective for folks who, it might have been a while since you've rented and you don't know what that, that really feels like or looks like or what that process looks like today.
Yeah, I do appreciate the question. Unfortunately, Ohio is what is considered a $1 one-day state. If you are $1 behind on rent or you are one day late on rent, you can receive a three-day notice. That is not an opportunity to cure. You can try to tender your rent in those three days and it can and often is refused by the landlord. That is just a three-day notice to vacate before a formal eviction process begins. At that point, the household will be served. A hearing will be held, assuming you have a judgment in favor of the plaintiff, in favor of the landlord. A set-out notice will be issued and the entire process can be concluded in 45 days.
Thank you for that perspective because I also think, you know, as we talk about housing, I mean, there's policies clearly from the local perspective. I mean, just like with the, with our, with wages that we, there are some things that we can put into place. But I think that this is why it's also important as perspective for especially folks who are watching, that state policy sometimes really hinders the progress that we're trying to make in a city and how we're trying to tackle our problems. So it takes us getting super creative in terms of how we can really provide support for folks and how we start to, you know, tackle some of the things that we saw in that presentation. So thank you for that.
And if I may expand on that too, I was in the city of Gehanna last night where they adopted a pay-to-state ordinance, which does sever that $1 one-day rule and gives tenants an opportunity to cure, which is designed to match the rights that homeowners already have in a foreclosure process.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Heidi and Carly, for that presentation and all the work that you're doing at the Affordable Housing Alliance. And just so folks understand, we're talking about, again, wages here, but you can't silo that off, right? And again, what we, what I know from experience, and I think what the data just shows, tells us is that in order for our residents to be successful, it starts with stability at home, right? Housing is a human right, period, point blank. And if folks are not stably housed, all the other pieces of this great economy that we have in Columbus, they are not going to be able to really share in or to be able to partake in. So housing is key and it is that, that building block to stability and that building block to a livable wage and to having a job. So just want to make sure that folks understand the context here and that Chair Faber doesn't know. I'm not coming for the Housing Committee, okay? So put that on the record. But thank you again. Next, we have Mr. Bill Lafayette, who is no stranger to this place or, and really appreciate all the work that he's done. Local economist and owner of Regionomics LLC and really excited about your presentation, sir. So I'll kick it over to you.
Thank you very much for the information. For the 27, 28 years since my graduation from the...
Oh, for the, for the 28 years since my graduation from the doctoral program at Ohio State's Fisher College of Business, my focus has been economic analysis and economic development in communities, especially communities in Central Ohio. Especially relevant to tonight's discussion, City Council and the Franklin County Auditor supported me in completing a comprehensive study of the economics of tax incentives in 2020. And I'm also a member of the city's Tax Incentive Review Council. I strongly support a wage that companies are required to pay to qualify for an incentive. On top of communicating an expectation that Columbus employers will pay their workers a fair wage, it recognizes that costs of living and the costs of city services are steadily increasing. Now, this policy may cost Columbus some projects that will go somewhere else, but that's okay. Low-wage jobs are still going to be created, lots of them. It's just that they won't be incented. We want workers to be able to support themselves and their households with a living wage. But that begs a really important question. What is a living wage? Well, that depends on where you live and what your household looks like. The Ohio Association of Community Action Agencies has what they call a self-sufficiency calculator, the wage that you need to earn to support yourself and your household without assistance beyond tax credits. If you're a single person living alone in Franklin County, you need to earn $12.09 an hour full-time or $25,528 per year to be self-sufficient. But if you're a single parent with a school-age child, the self-sufficiency wage is $22.44 an hour or $47,400 a year. If that child's an infant, the wage jumps to $25.03 an hour or $52,867 per year. The big difference is, of course, childcare. The Department of Urban Studies and Planning at MIT has a living wage calculator. The assumptions are somewhat different and the minimums are even higher. The point is this, however you calculated, a $15 wage doesn't give lots of households what they need to stand securely on their own. Housing costs, as Carly pointed out, are a big part of the concern, especially for renters. More than 1/3 of renter households in the city of Columbus are what the Department of Housing and Urban Development calls housing cost burdened, those spending 35% or more of their income on rent. More than 1 in 5 households rent, renting in Columbus spend half of their income or more. And that's actually slightly less than the national average. Raising this floor certainly recognizes the cost of living in Columbus is increasing, but it also recognizes that people working in Columbus cost the city money, not as much as residents do. But workers are not costless, even if they live someplace else. Public safety and street infrastructure are the big factors there. Now let me turn for a minute to the floor itself. A boost from $15 to $18.50 or $20 an hour is actually much less of an increase than it might seem. City Council set a $10 floor in the mid-2000s. That $10 is equivalent to $15.20 in today's dollars. That $10 is equivalent to $15.20 in today's dollars. The $12 that was set as a minimum in 2010 is equivalent to $16.33 today, and the $15 in 2019 is equivalent to $17.41 today. My recommendation is actually to adopt the floor, be it $18.50 or $20, index it to inflation using the Consumer Price Index, if that's possible, and update that floor annually. That way, there's going to be no decay in the floor's value over time and no need to revisit this question every few years. So that's what I wanted to share, and again, big thanks for inviting me in. I definitely appreciate the opportunity, happy to take questions.
Thank you, Bill, and those numbers are astonishing to hear, right? That, you know, we're always going to be chasing, and, and that's the thing that I think that we have to think about and that we wrestle with as a council, is how do we ensure that our residents are able to keep up with that? One thing, and because you've done work across the entire country, you know, what in other places have you seen higher wages? What does that look like? You know, how has that impacted those cities' economy overall and their job growth?
Well, higher wages are actually a function of the productivity of the workforce and the value of their output. So if wages are higher, that means the workforce is more productive, and that's why every time I get to, to talk, I push the idea of education and training as a way to lift people's income. That makes them more productive and it allows employers to pay them more. What will happen then is that because the demand for goods and services is higher because wages are higher, then the price of goods and services increases. And so it actually, it's, it's kind of ambiguous whether those cities are better off or worse off.
Got it. And, and then, and I'm sure you may have crunched the numbers, because I know you like crunching numbers, but the impact of Intel and now this new announcement with, with Honda, no doubt it is going to apply pressure to our already unstable housing market, but what do, I guess, large companies like that then do to, I guess, the supply chain, if you will, and the other ancillary jobs that go around with it? Do you think that there, we could see rising wages just to be competitive or to keep up with those types of jobs so that other employers are, you know, being competitive?
Definitely. I'm currently working with Morpsy as part of my board service on the population and housing impacts of Intel and now, I suppose, Honda too. The, the impacts are going to be substantial, and I'm actually really, really worried about the ability of our housing market to keep up. I'm also really, really worried about the workforce implications, because these wages that Intel will be paying, which actually range across the spectrum, they're not all really, really high paying jobs. These above market wages are going to force other employers to pay more in order to keep their employees. Every worker that Intel takes on or the suppliers take on would have worked somewhere else in the community, in the region, had Intel not existed. And so the population impact that we're going to see, I argue, is going to be pretty close to what we would see if Intel were hiring nobody locally. So I'm scared, I'm honestly scared.
We need you to be optimistic, not scared.
I'll try.
We're going, we're going, we're going, we're going to take this head on and we're going to be successful.
There are, there are definitely, definitely.
I was just going to say, can we flip that also and just see like what are the, you're cautioning us on what, what the negative effects are, could be, but then can we talk about the flip side of what the positive effects?
Many, many, many. For one thing, it puts us on the map, and I'm sure Justin could talk about this more eloquently than I ever could, but we are now prominently featured as a, a center for technology, and we have been for a while with all the data centers we've been attracting with the decades of IT infrastructure that we've built up through the needs of Ohio State and the banks and the insurance companies and the state government and the, the corporate headquarters who are voracious consumers of data. All of those things, I think, positioned us very well to get Intel, and it's just a different focus in technology, but it's definitely technology and it's going to attract much more, and it will increase wages in central Ohio, no doubt about it.
Any other questions from you, Councilmember? Thank you again, Mr. Lafayette, for being here and for that, I think, very poignant recommendation. We, I really appreciate it. Next, we have Mr. Justin Bickel. He's the Managing Director of Client Services and Project Management for One Columbus. So, you know, if you, if you're looking at the folks that we're bringing here today, those who work in economics and understand that, those that are working in housing in that community perspective, but there's also this other perspective of those who are actively out on our behalf as a community going to seek new opportunities for our residents. So we wanted to make sure that, you know, One Columbus, who's been a great partner, has had fantastic success of putting Columbus on the map and bringing thousands of jobs to this community, to make sure that we got that perspective as well. So thank you for being here, Justin, and I'll turn it over to you.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Chair Baesten, for having me here. Councilmember Broso de Pedia and Quentin, thank you for the invite. As, as you stated, the city has been a massive partner of ours for over a decade now, since the inception in 2010, when we were known as Columbus 2020, and now as One Columbus the last few years. And there's certainly not much that we haven't seen, and as Bill alludes to, I think there's plenty more to be seen and learned here over time too. So my role here at this meeting is to kind of just give a little bit of perspective on really just looking at the last, I'd say 20 month, 22 months. If we look at 2021 and 2022, kind of in a box, on our competitiveness, what we've competed for as a region, and then what that translates to down into the local level, not just the city of Columbus, but giving a little bit of perspective on what's going on around the city of Columbus as well that's directly impacting this conversation, I think, too. Just for kind of framework purposes, as a refresher, One Columbus is an 11 county economic development organization. The state of Ohio is 88 counties, so there are five other regional organizations like ours that are state level partners. Jobs Ohio has kind of separated out here, as you can see on this map, into six regions. And obviously, the city of Columbus here is a significant partner in our efforts, objectives, and success, but there are 11 counties in total and 24 communities within those 11 counties that are part of this effort collectively. This is kind of where I wanted to start out as far as the competitive opportunities, just to give you an understanding of, of the distribution related, and as Quentin alluded to in his comments, I think the only other applicable sort of job type that we could talk about in this respect, albeit likely not the benefactor of incentives as a distribution related opportunity, would be customer support, which obviously been a lot of changes with the office environment in the last two and a half years especially. So focusing this discussion as it applies to incentives, we really narrowly focused in on the distribution, so e-commerce fulfillment warehouse component of what our pipeline looked like. So this is filtered down, filtered down, filtered down to look at what we competed for, and a project also just to set some, some framework as well. To us is a company that is either here in the 11 counties that we represent in central Ohio or somewhere else in the world that is evaluating this 11 county region as a growth market, whether you're going to expand here, relocate here, acquire a company and come into new, et cetera, et cetera, and you're going to commit to creating net new jobs, fixed asset investment and everything that comes with that. So taking a snapshot, and this is from 1-1 of 2021, really through last week, when we pulled these numbers at the end of the week, and what we competed for on a warehouse and distribution related aspect is a total of 33 projects. Out of the entire pipeline, that's probably roughly about 20%. I would say we're about 200 to 250 total projects that we've worked on in those 22 months. And so if we look at these 33 projects, 28 of them are attraction opportunities. Very rarely do we have an instance where an existing warehouse or distribution employer is expanding that footprint, because they're really coming based on need geographic proximity, being able to get product to consumer within that, that one day truck drive. So I think there's a lot to be said there. There are very few instances, I'd like to think that one success that we had recently with Lululemon, who bought a building here a decade ago, has expanded, so they're, they're one of the, the few expansion projects. So of those 33, that accounts for about $1 billion worth of investment. And so that may be facility improvements, that may be equipment, software, technology, training, that, not the training aspect, but they'll be training their employees and certainly the real estate investment there. Of those 33 projects, we're at about 5,700, rounding up a little bit, net new jobs to the region that we could have been eligible for, and about $227 million in total payroll tied to those 5,700 net new jobs. And that equates to what we've seen, now this as far as eligibility, we didn't win all these, about $19.14 an hour, when you average out that. Now that, that is, I think, as accurate as we possibly could be. Of course, there, you know, some of these operations may have a technology component to it or, you know, higher level paying jobs, but the majority of those are going to be picker packers, moving product throughout the facility. If we look, look at the next slide, over that same timeframe, as I mentioned, about 22 months, these are where all the successes that we had in the region, and that was 99 so far year to date, including in 2022, and where those have all gone. And so of course, there's a cluster around Franklin County, city of Columbus, but there's been great success just overall. Again, this is all facility types, we're going to drill down here as we proceed to the next slide, looking at that same map, but carving out the city of Columbus, and again, 99 total successes for this region year to date as of 1-1, 21 through now, and of those, city of Columbus has successfully landed 38 in total, which accounts for almost 40%, 30% roughly of the net new payroll, and that net new payroll averages out across all projects again to just under $72,000 annual pay. The net new jobs is just over 5,000 and the total fixed asset investment is, is just north of $1.1 billion. Just to give a little background there, so if we go down even further and focusing on the distribution opportunities, so we've, we, we started out here at the macro level and talked about all facility types, and now we see the blue dots and where the successes in this specific sector have landed, and it might be a little bit to see from your vantage point there, from the cheap seats, but what's going on around us, you see there's a cluster down at the Rick and Becker area. Of course, we've got a confluence of communities with OBETs and Groveport, and the city of Columbus, we've got Northern Pickaway County and the Joint Economic Development District between the city of Columbus, the JED. Canal Winchester has built quite a bit of product over the last few years as well. So if we, I guarantee you this would have looked a lot different if we would have looked at it from maybe 2015 to 2020 or through 2020, and a lot of it would have been probably concentrated down in that Rick and Becker area from the new build and where the successes were, but as the region's grown and as land has been acquired and new developers coming in, there's more competitiveness just in the region. So a research team, which is absolutely phenomenal, pulled together a new tool that we're testing out, used this, this tool that we're testing out to, to provide a heat map here, and focusing on the Rick and Becker area, because obviously that's going to be the most highly concentrated area as far as the city of Columbus is concerned, where we're looking at these distribution warehouse related occupations and, and operations. This heat map shows you where those workers live in the region, and of course, you can see here, very, very high concentration in the city of Columbus and of course Franklin County. And to add a couple of, of, of ancillary notes here, we're looking at about 39% of the material mover positions in Franklin County overall are of non-white ethnicity and are living in most of those areas that we're looking at here within the city of Columbus. So the Rick and Becker area is obviously a very populated area with city of Columbus residents who are also traveling there to work, thousands and thousands of jobs. And if we can take a look at the bottom box, the Rick and Becker Employee Assistance Network, which is a convening of over 100 companies, I think, that are surveyed in the Rick and Becker area, led by the Columbus Region Airport Authority, they do an annual wage survey of, of those who participated in that survey in the Rick and Becker area, and as you can see, this natural progression here on raise, on, on wages rising. The starting wage that everybody has sort of reported on is about $16.76 an hour. The midpoint is $18.56 and the max rate is $19.45, as far as those who participated and what was generated in 2022 report. So if you go back to what I opened up with, as far as what we're experiencing overall as a region, what we're competing for against other markets outside of Ohio, that $19.45 wage at the high point is kind of what we're seeing as the average wage on the projects we've been eligible for within the last 22 months, just to get a little, give a little bit of perspective there. The last slide I wanted to talk about was again, the points that I raised about what's going on around us here, where we sit in, in the city of Columbus and, and some of those highly dense warehouse and distribution sort of submarkets as we look at it. Currently, there are 26 buildings under construction where you see all those red dots totaling almost 18 million square feet of speculative development. That is a record, it's continued to be a record, and we don't really see an end to it. We just see, as we continue to grow and grow outwardly, that those nodes that you're seeing that concentration of, we'll continue to see that speculative development and, and companies coming to evaluate not just what may be in the city of Columbus, because when we're eligible to participate or compete at the regional level, there's options. There are options in the city of Columbus, there are options in West Jeff, there are options in Aetna, and so we're presenting those options from a competitive scenario to the client, to the end user, to the consultant. And so just to break that 17.9 million square feet down total, there's seven that are over 1 million square feet, 10 are between 500,000 and 1 million, and nine under 500,000. I think one final point that I'd like to make about some of the speculative development and, and some things that, that some of our communities have done here over the last couple of years, namely like Canal Winchester, as Quentin's familiar with, Canal Winchester has successfully built some speculative development and, and landed quite a few opportunities here over the last few years. And to give an understanding of, of where they are and evaluating sort of their thresholds for incentives as well, as we've seen wage, these average hourly wages rise and what we've been competing for, they've sort of set a barometer as far as maybe not necessarily putting something into legislation, but they will not, they will not entertain, I guess, if you will, below certain points. And so where we are right now, we're seeing Canal is maybe roughly $18.50, excuse me, $18.50 an hour. Madison County is a little bit below 17, as far as what they will not entertain below that threshold. Aetna does not have a threshold, they have a pre-1994 CRA in Licking County, and so really it's, it's, it's up to the schools as far as negotiating things like pilots on a 15-year, 100% property tax abatement, but there are a couple here that are post-94s with, do give them the flexibility to install some sort of legislation that places a placeholder in for wage thresholds. But just to give a flavor for what we're seeing in a couple of those markets, or submarkets, I should say, it fluctuates, and I think it's basically something that I think we'll continue to see. And as costs rise, competitive for, competitiveness for talent rises, we'll see that average hourly wage, I think, increase across the board as well. That's, I think, going back to the, the REIN survey that I, I mentioned a couple of minutes ago, the, the historical content. The the historical context there would would reflect that as well, as far as who's operating in that highly dense area down there in Rick and Becker. So thank you again for having me this evening, Quentin. Thank you, and I will take any questions.
Thank you, Justin. That is great information. And I think it's amazing. The name of the organization is One Columbus, but they're for the region. My job is to look out for the City of Columbus. So and I'm not, you know, folks who know me and that can have, we have our briefings, I'm very competitive. I'm like, why don't we, I want that deal right here in my backyard, but we don't get everything, right? And and so it is this, I think, this delicate balance that we as a city have to think about. I think as the region grows, yes, we benefit, but there is one caveat I want to make sure that folks understand is that, you know, our city budget and the services that we have to our residents comes primarily from income tax. So even though those jobs may be being recreated, you know, there's other issues. Our residents may not have transportation to get to those new jobs that are further out. That income tax is staying with that community. But then those folks are coming back into the City of Columbus that we then, as a city, have to pay for those services, water, police, fire, recreation and parks. And so it's just keeping that in mind for folks. And when we talk about this, it's really easy to say, go go for broke and go to this, but we have to have this delicate balance. I think you answered one of my questions about what you're seeing in the region as far as competitiveness in 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 the wage space. But I really want to ask this question to you and probably to our next presenter as well. This Amazon effect specifically in the logistics space, you know, they're at 19 and in some cases 20 bucks an hour for some of their workers. Do you see for the logistics and warehousing space in particular, in order to stay competitive and to keep up, do you see those wages moving in that direction to compete with that Amazon effect? So just wanted to get your commentary on that.
Personally, I think, well, we we have an economic monitor that stacks our region up against other peer markets around the country. And and one of these components is tracking where we are on a wage standpoint, certainly, but also on the most in-demand occupations or who's posting for those most in-demand occupations. And the last that I saw, Amazon accounted for for fewer than 10% of the open recs across the market here in the warehouse and fulfillment e-comm distribution segment. I think Amazon's entry into the market had more of a significant, significant impact on getting us to where we are today as far as wages rising than I think it will in the future. I think just the competitiveness and the fact that this, nothing's going to change about this market's geographical location. So if if an end user or developer senses that they would have success here and whether consolidating somewhere else or coming new to be able to get product to customer within that day's truck drive, they're going to do it. And they're going to have us on that eligibility competitiveness scenario. But I think Amazon has more of responsibility or has more of a responsible part in getting us to where we are today with this segment's wage rises than they will in the future.
Got it. Thank you.
So Justin, I have a question. When you look at that map, when you were looking at, when we were looking at, especially the development about Rick and Becker, right? Because that's like kind of a district. I just went on a tour of Rick and Becker and they talked a lot about how much more business they were able to do during COVID, actually, like it was buzzing. And and there's an intermodal facility for folks who don't know of, you know, moving things onto trains that move things onto trucks, they move very quickly. So there, it makes a lot of sense to want to build in that area because there's proximity to the industry, right? The other thing that struck me, though, is when you, we talked about this, just the sheer square footage, right, of where some of these warehouses are. I mean, I feel like there's like a little, it's like a little bit of like a chicken and an egg thing here. Like it's a little bit of like, where are you building this? Because if you think about, especially as we talk about density in the City of Columbus, like where would we build a facility that has and who and and not, I mean, where could we plop down a big warehouse like this in Columbus, right? So that's the first question that I have around like just motivation as we're building like these areas and thinking about what the council member said around, you know, how it is a delicate balance, right? Because it's a little bit of like, the market necessitates for us to raise wages. First of all, I will always say because it's the right thing to do because I deeply believe that. But in a set, and I think we're motivated by that, but also to be competitive, right? For for the good of all, right, to ensure that we can employ our folks and that we have them, we're attracting them. I swear there's a, there's a question here. But I'm just wondering, can you talk to us a little bit about that balance, though? Because I'm just trying to figure out, you know, what is the way forward when we're thinking about, you know, I'm just thinking about where in Columbus are we building facilities like that? Where can we build them? How do we attract them so that we can keep that balance? And we can keep folks working here because it's good for the region. But, you know, obviously, we are the Columbus City Council. So can you speak?
Yeah.
Do all those thoughts make sense?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you for framing me up. I I think Quentin could, I will answer it, but I think Quentin could certainly give much more context than I could. Certainly, the Rick, there's, there's plenty of land down there, right? That's in the City of Columbus proper, but we also have that Joint Economic Development District between the City of Columbus and Pickaway County. And if you've been down to Rick and Becker and you've just gone past the southern portion of 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 the runway there at the Rick and Becker Airport, you're in Pickaway County, but you're also in the Joint Economic Development District still for the City of Columbus. So that's, that's one. I mean, I think that that will continue to happen. There's plenty of land to be developed, plenty of more opportunity to take advantage of building places where people can go to work. And I think that's a point that you've made Chair Banks and too. There's something to be said about the income tax collection and and reporting to work and and generating that and, you know, keeping the dollars within the community versus what's gone on the last two and a half years in this this virtual world and the difficulty in being able to maintain and create, or excuse me, create and maintain a place of employment and work. The other thing that I think we're seeing too is redevelopment. So where there is opportunity is, you know, let's talk about what, I mean, Rogue's done in Milo Grogan, right? I mean, there are plenty of vacated, old industrial sites, buildings. Columbus Casting Site is a most recent perfect example of that, right? We all know the history there and the opportunity that's going to be built, especially for residents on the south side, with what's going to take place there from a development perspective. So I think just using the Rick and Becker example and the opportunity that still exists there, as well as the redevelopment opportunity in the infill, as far as redeveloping the central core. That's the best way that I think that I could probably answer that question.
Yeah. And and just to add some context to that, too, right? Understanding the different varying complications with those sites, right? Like a site like Columbus Castings.
We're talking about.
You know, you're lucky that you get someone who wants to to come into a site that is that contaminated, that dirty that we had to clean up versus greenfield spaces, right? Which are much more easier to develop. And I I do want to make sure I center back to this, to this one question that I have and and if you have the numbers directly. Not everything that is being built or jobs that are coming here are getting an incentive. What we're talking about today are those harder jobs. Maybe it's a unique opportunity for us to make the numbers work. There is needed an incentive. So not every job that's being created or every investment that's coming into the city is getting an incentive. Do you know roughly offhand, out of those projects, how many received an incentive or how many just came to the region naturally?
Are you referring to the map where I had the distribution related successes in the market?
I think it was the the macro level one where you.
The overall successes? Okay. I would say probably the majority. Most of what what One Columbus is going to be responding to is going to be a competitive situation where we've got, not only are we competing with, you know, in this space specifically too, right? Because it varies throughout all sectors as far as who is our non-Ohio competition. But if I'm looking just here, it could be Memphis, it could be Louisville, it could be Eastern Pennsylvania, go on, you know, so on and so forth. But I I would say the vast majority of them probably did. The one caveat that I should have made is that these don't all reflect maybe what the City of Columbus has worked on either, right? I mean, so going back to my my primary slide, as far as what we've competed for, those 33 projects in this specific sector, that's just what we had visibility to. There may be others, as you mentioned Chair Bankston about, maybe City of Columbus working on it, and there wasn't necessarily an incentive evolve involved, but there was a location decision that was being made and ended up being a success for the City of Columbus. It just might not have been something that we had visibility to or worked on in conjunction with the city or with the state. But I would say the vast majority of these companies received incentives. With what we work on, these are competitive scenarios. We're competing against non-Ohio markets. And at the end of the day, once the cost has been evaluated, once the workforce situation has been evaluated, real estate has been validated. We're getting to that point where we're probably talking about a competitive scenario where incentives are being proposed.
Gotcha. Thank you again, Justin. Really appreciate your work. And just one last question I did have. How important is it, though, for us to also think about flexibility? I I think about some legislation that we passed earlier this year around cold storage, right? And looking at our competitiveness, that was a deficit that we had compared to other regions. And so opportunities like that, opportunities like larger data centers that come here. You know, I just want to, if you could just chime in and give some context to how important it also is for us to be flexible when we have those unique opportunities.
I certainly think it is. I think the best way to respond to that is, you mentioned data centers. I can't remember how many years ago it was now, but the state passed legislation, the data center tax exemption legislation, which really opened up our competitiveness here to land multiple AWS facilities, Google facilities, Facebook, et cetera. And so I think that, you know, going back to what Bill talked about with Intel, the semiconductor industry was something that is entire, is something that is entirely new, not just to us here in Central Ohio and the State of Ohio, but the Midwest. And so that's why, I mean, we still, we, there's so much opportunity that we aren't necessarily fully aware of, but I can tell you that we're going to adapt and we're going to be more competitive in that space because that's going to be the future. You think about the Honda initial announcement over four decades ago and what that changed for not only this area, but the State of Ohio, we had to look at that the same way, too. And so to answer your question, I think, is we're talking about certain sectors, talking about certain technology-based things and what we're seeing for the future as far as the opportunity, not just for the city, but for for the community overall, being competitive and flexible and forward-thinking about how do we compete better? And it doesn't necessarily have to be tied to an incentive, but it can be about, how do you better appeal to those employers to bring opportunities to your residents and be more competitive in that space? So I I look at it as the semiconductor segment alone, as far as thinking a little bit more critically into the future, how can we put ourselves, put ourselves in a position to be more competitive and provide those opportunities?
Thank you for that, and we will see those opportunities, no doubt. Last up, but certainly not least, a great partner, again, American Floor Source who hosted us. And also American Floor Source, who is located in the best district in the City of Columbus, District 5. That's Nick Bankston here. We're talking about all the growth and everything happening in near Rick and Becker. But there is another segment of our city that is poised for growth, and that is the Northeast Corridor. And we have a great partner there. So Mike Stenett is the president and COO of American Floor Source, who is growing leaps and bounds here in Columbus. And wanted to make sure we got that perspective from an employer on this subject. So thank you for being here and thank you for continuing to invest in Columbus. And I'll turn it over to you.
Okay. Thanks for having us. So good evening. I want to start with the the tax incentive is very important to our business and our future growth. The tax incentive aided our hiring during COVID, and during those times of uncertainty, we added jobs. If there are jobs lost in the market, you know, in the near future, for whatever reason, the tax incentive will allow us to hire when other companies could possibly be laying off and creating jobs. We currently cannot find qualified candidates at the current $15 rate that are dependable, willing to stick around and work. You know, by the time we get those employees trained and working independently, they're simply giving their notice or walking out mid-shift. Many of these candidates we interview are currently at a $16 rate or higher in their current job or in their previous jobs. So especially the people that have experience. So they're they're getting a higher rate than the $15. We have moved our hourly rate up from 1525 to 17, and now we're at $18 for our entry rate. We have noticed a big difference in the quality of candidates and especially the new hires. Our turnover rate has dropped significantly. These new hires have shown more determination and drive, and most of them want career paths and to move up in the organization. Some of the pros we feel to raising the the wage threshold would be better quality and dependable new hires that you can build your company around and flourish. To AFS, it's worth the additional pay to not be shorthanded and put all the workload on our current employees. With us having employees that care and want to move up in the organization, they make less costly mistakes, and we feel those savings far outweigh the additional costs for the wages. Bottom line is, you know, housing costs are up, whether you're renting or purchasing a new home. Fuel prices are up, and that's just the cost to get back and forth to work. Cost of heating and cooling your home is up, and groceries cost more. Basically, everything you need costs more today. Raising the wage threshold will help give a small amount of relief to the items that are absolutely necessary. I guess a few of the possible cons of raising the wage threshold would be, you know, the additional cost of higher rates during the training period of new employees for somebody like myself. We've tried starting at lower rates in the past and then giving a 90-day incentive and then a six-month incentive. The problem is, a lot of these employees that you bring in at the lower rates don't even make it to that first raise or especially the second one. So we're right back to square one without being able to offer those additional wages. So now that we offer it upfront, we've been a lot more successful. The other con would be, you know, just increasing expenses during uncertain times we're facing right now. You know, that's something on every business owner's mind right now. Most companies will be looking for ways to lower expensive expenses. However, ASF believes that investing into our people is the smart play today and in the future.
All right. Well, thank you for that testimony. I think you answered part of my question because, you know, one of the things that we have been discussing in all of my briefings, and it's come up time and time again, is thinking about that entry level person. And are we shutting them out of the workforce if we think about a wage north of $20 an hour, $18 an hour or even higher? And I think you touched on it a a little bit. But so so in your analysis, what you've seen, there's a payoff by having that initial wage higher. Or do you see that there would be some folks that slip through the cracks who, you know, may not have the skill set for that higher wage, but if they started at a lower wage, could work their way up?
I I think the trade-off for us has been just paying the higher wage upfront and and not not starting people lower than at 18. We've been a lot more successful just starting at 18.
Got it. And and just in 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 general, I think, the incentive process and working with the city, you know, if you could give us a little context, because it is a great Columbus story, American Floor Source and the expansion that you were going through. So just to make sure we get context to folks, could you just talk about that large expansion that you guys are going through? I drive down Stelter Road every day on my way to work. And one day there was trees and now it's just completely clear. And I see the the trucks rolling in and the construction. And now when you guys start making traffic on Stelter Road, then I'll come and knock on your door and and be upset. But if you could just talk a little bit about the expansion and what that means for Columbus residents.
Sure. So, you know, with with America's Floor Source, we're a company that's now the fifth largest flooring retailer in the nation. And obviously, based out of Columbus, Ohio, that's that's home to where our owner was born and raised, Jason Goldberg. And we are currently today, we call it the campus, which is on the backside of Stelter there in the industrial center. We're in four, four buildings, and then we have a fifth building. We're in four, four buildings and then we have a fifth building over across from the airport, just the storing facility. So we are building about a 280,000 square foot facility right on Stelter that we're going to house everything back into one house again instead of being in all, in all the different locations, which is going to definitely help, help our efficiencies and we're really excited about the, the new building, getting everybody back together and, you know, growing and creating jobs.
Yep. Thank you again. It's exciting. Councilmember, any questions?
I do. Mr. Stinet, right?
Yes.
May I call you Mike?
You may, please.
Thank you. I have a quick question. I'm going to put you on the spot a little bit since you are an employer who was here is I want to get your thoughts around, I thought it was interesting, the point that you brought up, Justin, around the flexibility of allowing for that flexibility. Can you talk, do, do you remember that point that Justin made? Can you, can you remind me? I'm going to get the numbers all wrong, Justin. It was a flexibility, I think it was another municipality that gave a flexibility within the terms of like you could fluctuate between like.
It's a post 1994 CRA. Yeah, that's a, a property tax abatement. So there's a pre 1994 where you cannot, you know, there's no flexibility to incorporate any of these sort of wage thresholds. And there are some communities in the market here across the 11 counties that we're in that obviously fall within that. But then there are others that have created post 1994s, which give them the flexibility if they so choose to implement some sort of wage threshold to be able to be considered for, let's say, just a property tax abatement.
And I, I think I, the way that I understood it, and maybe I, this was my own misunderstanding around it, but just that instead of saying this, putting a stake in the ground and saying it is 18 or 20, that you could fluctuate between. That's what you're saying, correct?
Sure.
Okay. Should have had coffee before this meeting.
Yeah.
So Mike, back to you, just, and I know that you, you kind of said this around, you just would want to go for the higher, you see the benefits of it. So you may, I mean, you may have already answered the question for me, but just wanted to get your perspective as especially, you know, as a, like a growing business, right? The implications and you're seeing the, the, the other side, right? Of how this actually saves you because you're getting more qualified employees or staying on, you're not having that gap in your workforce. But can you just talk about, you know, the difference between if we said, here's a flexibility, you can go, here's at least a threshold, you can go up from there or just kind of putting a stake in the ground? Again, I know I'm putting you on the spot.
Yeah. I mean, you know, like, like I said before, with, with us, I definitely think there needs to be a threshold so everybody's at least at that, that number. But, you know, to have flexibility and incentives to maybe go higher would be great. And I think it would be very beneficial.
Thank you. I know you're not the politician here, so I wanted you to. I appreciate that honest answer.
All right. Thank you, councilmember, and thank you, Mike, again, for, for being here and for your testimony. And just again, northeast Columbus, District Five, if you look it up on the map, great place to invest and grow. So there you go. At this, at this time, we'll move in to public comments or any comments online, I'm looking at my staff. Okay, no questions or comments? So, you know, this is one of those wonky policy subjects, right? That a lot of folks, it's hard to dive into, but we wanted to make sure that we had a robust conversation, a well-rounded discussion. So thank you to all of the speakers who came out today. You've given us, I think, a lot to, to think about as a council. And, and I'll just close with my closing statements and then councilmember, I'll let you have closing statements as well. You know, through this entire process, one of the things that I have been saying to my staff and team and what I've been thinking about is, you know, this policy and we talk about wages and we talk about housing, we talk about transportation, they're not silos. And so we really have to think about how is our policies dovetailing into one another? How are they complementing one another? Earlier this council, through Chair Favors' leadership amended and changed our requirements around affordable housing, right? That floor for us now is 60% AMI. And so for me, when I think about this, then that's where our wages should be, right? If we're building housing at that price point, our wages that the jobs create should be at that price point as well. And so we need to be thinking about how do we make sure that we are building the blocks and this council is thinking about that holistically, that this is not simply something that sits alone by itself. Absolutely, we need to pay folks more. And, but at the same time, when we pay them more, there are still other shortages in our region that we have to think about. Transportation, childcare costs, housing costs, education costs. And so those are things that are top of mind for me as we go into this final stretch and what our next steps are as we deliberate as a council and I, and bring forth a final recommendation. So again, I want to thank Director Stevens, Director of the Department of Development, Deputy Director Quentin Harris, Hannah Reed and the rest of their team for all the work that they have put in on this and have really leaned in during this process. So I really appreciate your work. Before we talk about next steps, councilmember, Baroso De Padilla, any final remarks from you?
Yeah. So first of all, I want to thank you, Chair Banksen, for the conversation this evening. And I think, you know, we had, we, we ran together and we often talked about just intentionality and also providing a platform to really educate folks, whether it's always here, right? It's living online. So we can always point back to this, even if people in their busy lives couldn't tune in today or come down to council, this is always there for them. So I appreciate the intentionality behind this process. I appreciate all of you being here and being good partners. I also wanted to just elevate, I mean, I think, you know, it's, it's interesting because I think we can talk all day about lots of things. I mean, at the end of the day, people just need to make more money, right? Like the world is more expensive and they need to make more money. And I know that that is not a sophisticated theory behind how we do that, but it, it is the end goal, like they just need to, because we need to, people need that in order to literally live, in order to survive, to pay rent, to have a car, to, to get by every day. And so, so I, I think we just need to figure out how we can make that possible and in all the ways that we can. And so that's my first thought. The second thing is, and I want to thank you, Mike, for being here today and for representing a company that I think it's important for us to also elevate companies that will go the extra mile, right? Whether it's for showing up and investing in their people, whether it's companies like Rogue or other companies within the, this is the dangerousness of like naming people because inevitably you're going to forget someone. But just using them as an example of, you know, you're making an investment in a community and you're saying, we're going to go the extra mile even though it's going to cost us, because at the end of the day, it's good business, right? Because when fundamentally, when you invest in people and communities, it will pay you back in dividends. And so I think that we need to start changing this idea of like, people do business in Columbus. No, you do the business of Columbus. And like those are the good partners that we want here and that's who we want to attract to our city and to our region. And so that's why, you know, having conversations like this and having folks really understand that we are really trying to live our values of centering on our people and families and their prosperity is important and making that known to folks who want to come here, that this is who we are as a city. And, you know, I think we talk a lot about the Columbus way. To me, that's the definition of the Columbus way. So thank you.
Thank you, councilmember, for that and always putting our families center in the discussion. I think for some, for some newbies, we did a good job tonight.
I agree. Go District Five and Eight.
That's right. That's right. So next steps in this, in this process, this is our final hearing on the wage threshold. What we will do now as a council is continue to receive feedback, continue to, to lean in and listen to folks. So if you have thoughts, if you want to give us information or advocate, please email my office. You can email JP Dorval, that's at J B as in boy, dorval, D O R V A L at columbus.gov. It is our goal and is my goal to get the rec, final recommendation to this council and get legislation passed by the end of the year. So please look out for communications from official city of Columbus council, communications as well as from my office when this will receive a, a first reading and second reading and, and hopefully passage. I do want to, again, thank my colleague that's here, but also be remiss if I didn't thank the rest of the members on this dais and how they've leaned in, President Harden, President Pro Tim Brown, Councilmember Dorns, Councilmember Fager and Councilmember Rimi for their support and for them leaning in during this process as well. So with that, that concludes today's hearing and thank everyone for being here. Have a good evening.